Is the funding for the baseball fields and the vice mayor wanted to discuss that? Shall we wait till she gets here to, shall we go to the, what do you want to do?
It is your privilege. I'll, I don't mind.
Gentlemen.
You're here to speak on baseball.
I would make the request, Mayor, if we could, just go to the, uh, the budget.
Okay. So, I'm sorry. Well, since the vice mayor requested be put on the agenda and it's kind of her discussion, do we want to wait until she gets here? Gentlemen, what do you?
Yeah, I would make the suggestion, uh, Mayor, if that's okay.
Butler?
I agree.
Okay. So, the vice mayor asked for this to be put on the agenda. She's not here yet, so where do I move the budget discussion up? And then? Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, here's the, was it, she's here?
I'll go ahead and end this.
Okay. Okay, got that.
And with that, um, I assume you guys will be right into that discussion and we'll, once that's done, we'll get into the budget and that's going to take us probably an hour or so, maybe a little less to go through budget worksheet.
Okay.
End of the budget?
End of the budget, okay. Let's go ahead and start the budget.
Okay. Mayor, we'll go ahead and start with the recap first before we get into much of the detail on the budget and we'll kind of stick to just the first page of the budget document that you have. There's some changes to, um, how we've fundamentally done the budget in the past or prepared the budget, so I just wanted to refresh everyone's memory with, with how this works. So, if you look at page one, it's listed as page 1024 on the legal size document. There are some line items that have changed for this year and I just want to walk through what those are. For everything they would do for all the pages behind this, um, the first column where it lists total, that column, uh, the total column simply totals everything over to the right. The total column is simply a check factor for me. So, when we talk about the line, line items in the budget, that total column is merely for me to be able to go back and make sure we're not missing anything. So, there'll be nothing in the total column, um, for the board to discuss or consider unless you notice an obvious error, but hopefully there, there are none there. So, we'll go, across the board, as everyone's aware, we budget by, um, account. In years past, um, there have always been discussions about the, there was so much money in the tree bank account or so much money in the park fund account or so much money in all these different accounts. Where, where is that money and how does that apply? So, prior to 2017, most of those dollars and those budgets were considered, um, as a part of the general fund and they kind of got lost in there. You'd have a due to, due from where there was, you know, a kind of a, an, not hidden, but certainly not readily visible amounts of money in the funds. So, for budgeting purposes, we broke this out so everyone will be able to clearly identify what dollars went into and what dollars came out of each account, source, funds, that sort of thing. So, as we go across, uh, the outline, the operating account is just that. It's our operating account and that's where most of our general revenues and general expenses go into and come out of. Your operating account, your biggest revenue sources are property taxes and sales taxes. There are certain, uh, other revenues that go into there, but your operating account will be the general revenues that go in, the general revenues that go out, a majority of your capital. So, capital, um, employee costs, those sorts of things, those are operating account generally. The next line item, the facilities account is a part of the general fund and that facilities account is identified, um, as a portion of our building permit revenue that comes in and it's really used for capital expenditures. What we don't want to do as a city is to take all of our building permit revenue and depend on building permit revenue for operations because building permit revenue is out of our control. It could be up one year, down one year. So, if we apply that building permit revenue to operations, let's say we take building permit revenue and we're dependent upon that for, um, payroll and building permits are reduced one year, then obviously we have a payroll or cash, cash flow problem. So, to safeguard against that, we take approximately half of the building permit revenue that comes in, it goes into facilities and those are primarily, primarily capital expenditures, um, just so we know we don't depend on that for operational cost. So, that's how we break that out and that's worked for us, um, substantially well over the past few years. The next column you have in front of you, uh, is listed as the stormwater program account. That has previously been the capital account. Where in, in budgets past, um, that will be a capital account and that's what we would purchase patrol cars out of, fire trucks out of, capital equipment or things that we needed. However, with the ARP money, the American Recovery Plan money that came in, the city has about two and a half million dollars available to it. We got roughly half of that last year. We'll get the other half in, uh, July of this year. And 100% of that money will go to, uh, the stormwater, um, program account and then stormwater management plan. As you're aware, we recently adopted, uh, stormwater ordinance. We're making some changes through our stormwater management plan, so that will be, um, the dollars that you see will be the seed money and we'll get into this, we'll get into the budget, but the stormwater program account will be made up of the, um, ARP, the American Recovery Plan dollars and once we institute a stormwater user fee, that stormwater user fee revenue will go into this as well for the long-term sustainability of our stormwater management plan. The next, um, line or the next column that you see is the Blue Cross Blue Shield Adjusting Account. The city got into an issue a few years ago where it really had some hidden costs that it couldn't, it couldn't follow or track very well. One of those was, um, employee health insurance. So, uh, we're now in our third year of this. To prevent, um, kind of a clouded employee health insurance or employee health insurance cost, we separated that into a separate fund. So, rather than, it, years passed, what would happen would be, or times passed, you would have money that's, um, paid into the employee health insurance. There'll be the employee premium for their health insurance, a hundred dollars a month, two hundred dollars a month, whatever their portion was, and the city would simply keep that portion in its checking account. And then when the Blue Cross Blue Shield bill came in, they would simply pay the bill. But there wasn't a true counting or accountability for what our health insurance cost plan was. What did it cost the city to do that? So, a couple of years ago, we broke this out into another checking account. So, what happens now is that every payroll, we take the city's percentage or cost for our health insurance plan and we transfer that from the general fund to the Blue Cross Health Insurance Account. We also take the money deducted from the employees payroll and we move that over to employee health insurance account and then we pay Blue Cross Blue Shield out of this account. The reason we do that is to make sure that our health insurance account is fully funded and we're not over allocating or overspending, um, unallocated dollars to health insurance. So, this is really our health insurance plan budget that comes out of that account. The next column you see is the Bowie Park Account. It, it simply is that, uh, several years ago, the Bowie, the Bowie Park Account was created, um, through the sale of revenue and, um, other dollars brought into the city regarding the properties for Publix in those locations or the retail locations. That money went into there and those dollars are restricted for use within the park itself. And once we get into the budget, we'll go down the list of what those are, but that's, that's how that account came about. State Street Aid is, uh, money that comes to us from the state. It can only be used for roadway construction, roadway maintenance. You may recall, in the years 2015, or 2010, roughly to, through 2006, 2016, um, we had a series of years where streets and roads were not resurfaced and not a lot of roadwork was done. The reason for that is they took state street aid money and paid personnel with those dollars under the discussion that you had to have personnel to maintain roads. 2016, 17, we changed that because, um, if we're not maintaining roads, you don't necessarily need that personnel. So, we moved all that out. Public Works and all their employees are now paid out of the operating or general fund. State Street Aid is used specifically for roadway maintenance and roadway maintenance equipment and we'll see when we get into the budget how that applies. The Tree Bank, Tree Bank Funds are another restricted use fund restricted by the city. If there's going to be a clearing of trees or a measurement of cleared trees on a commercial site, um, those dollars or those tree values are calculated. Those dollars then come into the city. The city then uses those dollars for, um, tree management replantings, things of that nature throughout the city and that's where those dollars come in. That's infrequent that we get those dollars, so we're careful with how they're expended back out because you don't know. That's not a recurring fund, so you want to make sure you're careful with those dollars. The Drug Fund is a fund that's established by the state. It allows for, um, the city to keep certain dollars that are collected based on drug investigations. An example would be if the city conducts an arrest of someone, um, associated with the drug use, drug possession and it's determined that their vehicle that they were using could be seized based on their use of that, then the city could, uh, throughout the process, keep the vehicle if it's awarded to the city. The city can then sell that vehicle, keep those funds for drug investigations and similar patrol activities. So, that's where those dollars come in. Again, it's an infrequent amount, so we attempt to be careful with that to make sure we don't consider it to be recurring funds. And then lastly, um, bonds and other programs. The bonds in this case are the 2021B bond issued dollars that the city received last year. Everything that we spend out of that will go through this bond, this bond account and I'll go through that when we get into the greater detail of the budget. And then other programs are similar, smaller grants or activities. You'll see some money that, that comes in here for revenue and it's money that comes through the state. It's pass-through money where police and fire employees getting a certain, um, stipend each year. I believe it's $800 per employee per year. So, rather than show that as being general fund revenue, because it isn't, we run those dollars through the grant program account. That money comes in, it makes it to the city and it's paid right back out to the employees. So, we try not to cloud, um, a revenue expense with those funds that are not, not city dollars. So, that's kind of a general recap of those columns and as we get into the budget, we'll walk down, um, all of the department budgets and I'll highlight for you, um, the significant changes, uh, for this year. So, that's going to take some time, Mayor, so before we get into that, do we want to kind of stop here, understanding where we were and have the?
Why don't we do that?
Ballpark discussion?
Yes, I would hate for, um, I know that our budget discussion is exciting and more than you ever wanted to hear, but unless you just want to stay for that later, you're more than welcome to. You should be able to tune that right out then. So, we'll go back to the, if it's okay with y'all, we'll go back to the ballpark discussion and Vice Mayor, since this was your item, I will turn the meeting over to you.
Upcoming is, um, the 2023, uh, Softball World Series and our community is, if you know during ball season, most of our community is at the ball field. Even though, uh, it's a Williamson County Park, um, it is a part of, a big part of Fairview. And so, I feel like we should allot some money to this, um, you know, joint venture with the county and the park board to see that our, um, ball field is kept up to date with, uh, you know, lighting, drainage, um, fields and, um, you know, any paving that needs to be done. So, with that, I would like to, you know, hear from the board so that they can explain it further.
Mayor Commissioners, first, thank you for, uh, for putting this on your discussion here in the workshop. Let me first introduce you to, this is Alexis Miniot. She's a sophomore at Sawani and she's majoring in politics. So, she's shadowing me and interning with me some this summer. So, she's been with me all day today. We've been to court a couple of places and now we're here. So, I just wanted to introduce her to the board. So, I'm here today, not in my capacity as Fairview City Judge or as former Fairview City Commissioner. I'm here as citizen and as member of the Fairview Recreation Association. And Vice Mayor is correct, in 2023, August of 2023, to be exact, we're going to be hosting a World Series for Dixie softball. We're going to have two age divisions and that will entail about 24 different teams coming from multiple states, uh, to the city of Fairview and Williamson County. It's been at least two to three days, maybe even the whole weekend, depending on how far they get in the tournament here. And we're trying to push, we're going to be working with hopefully Williamson, Inc., on, uh, getting those folks to spend their tax, or their dollars rather, here in Williamson County, which will, uh, result in tax dollars for both the county and hopefully the city in, in terms of municipality. So, um, a lot of people will be here next August and I want not only the county, the city, but also the Fairview Recreation Association to put on a good tournament. And to do that, it's going to take the help of multiple entities, including this, um, this board, the city of Fairview and also Williamson County Parks and Recreation, uh, to accomplish that. We've been back operating as a board, uh, the Fairview Recreation Association since 2016 and since that time, anyone that has been around the ballpark will recognize that a lot of, a lot of improvements have been made. The city partnered, uh, with the county probably three to four years ago now to make, uh, significant cosmetic improvements to the ballpark. And this is really just a, a continuation of the things that were done several years ago, trying to keep, keep improving the park. In the, in, in between the previous renovations and now, uh, the FRA was able to raise, raise money, save money, uh, to install the new LED scoreboards, uh, there at the park. We did that without asking for any money from anyone else. And we've also, over the course of the past couple of years, been able to save about $40,000. And with that $40,000, we wanted to put that to making some of the improvements that I have outlined in the email that I know has been sent to, to each of you. The first part of those improvements were field resurfacing, just the infield resurfacing, not, not the outfield. We're not siding outfields or sprinkling outfields or anything like that, but we're going to resurface the infields. That hasn't been done in about three years, three to four years and it needs to be done periodically and we're, we're in desperate need of this, this top coat, safe coat, um, on the four fields that we use. So, on the playing surface, we're going to put down, uh, new, new safe coat and, uh, reset home plate on all four fields to make sure that it's aligned with the, the foul poles. We're going to put, um, because over time it shifted, so now you can have a pitching rubber pointing here and the, you know, it's, it's out of line with second base. It's just weird. So, we're trying to get all of that straightened out, um, get new safe coat put down and Theo Langford with Turf Noggin is doing that work. He's already been set up as a vendor, uh, approved vendor through the county. The FRA has signed a contract, uh, with Turf Noggin. That contract was for, I think it was $33,500. The FRA has put down the 50% deposit to get that work started. We've already signed that contract and in fact, Theo and his crew is out there doing some work today. So, we're needing some assistance with making up the other 50% balance, um, for Theo's portion of this work. I know Gordon and I, Mr. Hampton and I have talked, uh, in fact, before I ever sent an email to you guys, I had, I had spoken to Mr. Hampton about what, if anything, the county could do. And I know he was going to talk to his, his folks, fill us and see if there was any money that they could help, uh, with this part of the project and we've just not, I don't know where, where Gordon is on that. I'm sure he'll speak to that. So, point being, on that part of the project, we've got 50% already paid. We need some assistance with the other 50%, which is about $16,000, $17,000. The second part of the project that we would like to, to see done is, is lighting. We've had a consist, pretty consistent issue with, with lights, uh, either not being pointed the right direction. Uh, for instance, right now on field four, we've got a pole that has two lights instead of being pointed out into the field, they're pointed straight down at the bleachers. Uh, we've had issues with the lights, uh, pretty regularly being out on any given pole. I've got a, a pole on field two out there, which is the smaller field that has out of four lights on the pole, only two of them are working. And it's, it's not easy to, to fix that. It's not easy to get, uh, for Williamson County Parks and Rec, to necessarily get the company out there with the, the boom that's tall enough to be able to reach those lights, change those out as frequently as they go out. So, we have proposed that we install LED lighting. A lot of parks are going to that for a lot of various, a lot of different reasons. It's, it's expensive on the front end, but over time, and again, this is not necessarily a city issue, it's, or an FRA issue, it's a county issue, but over time, I, I submit that it's going to save the county a substantial amount of money in energy cost and running these lights during the summer out here at this ballpark. So, the, we got a bid last year for that. It was from Helios Energy. Of course, uh, we were not in a position to do anything with that bid last year, but this year with the money that we was able to save, we had hoped that we could partner with, uh, the city to put together some money to present to the county and ask that the county match those funds for this project. The bid has come back, I think it was $218,000 and change. It's gone up about $50,000, $60,000 from last year when I got the original bid. I know that you guys have been presented with a, uh, packet from Helios Energy that included some, some, um, valuations that they did about energy cost and various other, other things. And it also shows a schematic of the field, the lighting, how that would look and, um, and, and goes into details about the specs on, on the product that they would be installing. I told Mr. Hampton, when I talked to him, I can look at that sheet of paper and I don't really know what I'm looking at. It looks good. I'm sure Mr. Hampton is going to add, um, whether or not it's, it's, it's what would need to be installed. I think he had his folks maybe look at it to, to determine if it would, if it would support, uh, the area that's, that's attempting to be illuminated. So, uh, you have that in front of you and that's, that's obviously a big ticket item, $218,000. So, if we take the $40,000 that we had at the beginning of the year, we being the FRA, we've used about 16, 17 of that. Uh, we've got about 23 left. We anticipate that we'll be able to have another 20 by the end of this year with the tournaments that we'll host. So, we should have $40,000 coming into this. And if we could get a, a like amount of money or, um, as, as much as the city has available in this year's budget, uh, to, uh, mark or earmark for this project, then we could, uh, use those funds to ask the county to match, uh, that amount of money to complete that portion of the project. I think there's ways that it can be done. I'll let Mr. Hampton speak as to the process with the county. I've talked to Commissioner Jones. Uh, Commissioner Jones has, um, couldn't be here tonight, but he had, um, he was interested in, in doing this project. He was interested in if it meant submitting it, um, to the county in the form of a resolution, uh, to see if, if funds would be available in this upcoming year. He would do it that way. I don't think the county budget, although I think it's gone through committee, I don't think it's necessarily finalized yet. I don't know if there's any, any money that could even, even be set aside, uh, before the budget's approved, but there are ways. I think if the FRA and the city are willing to join together, put some money together, pull some money together and go to the county, there's ways that we could get the county to commit to, to matching those funds to get this accomplished. And, um, so, the, 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 the parks are used, as, as Vice Mayor Anderson said, by a significant number of people, not only kids participating in sports through the FRA. I think this year we've got about 350, 400 kids, uh, playing ball there and, you know, those teams not only play each other, but they play teams from other areas as well. So, you can't just look at it as we've got three or 400 people using the park. Most of those kids have at least one parent, maybe two. Most of those kids have grandparents that come. They come to that park frequently. So, really, really quickly, the number goes from three or 400 participants to 1,000 or so participants by looking at all the people that come to our park and looking at the other teams that come to visit our park to participate there. So, it's not just about this isolated event in August of 2023 because the benefit of these changes and these improvements far exceed one isolated event in August of 2023. Our kids are going to continue to benefit from this. They're going to benefit from the field improvements this year on the, the resurfacing. We first got those fields resurfaced two or three years ago, uh, and it came a rain, we played ball that night typically because it drained well and it just worked. Now, if it rains, we're down, we're out. And they're going to benefit from that immediately. Once these fields are resurfaced in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to, to handle the water, uh, go on with both regular season ball and tournament ball. And that's, that's a big draw for these, these other, uh, not sports, but when we go to, go to bid on a state tournament, um, that's a big draw for people to want to come to Fairview. Hey, we've played out there before, they can get those fields ready. If it comes to rain, as it often does in July or August, they'll have the fields ready to play. So, I think you have to look at it as not the isolated event, not an isolated event, but, but multiple people use this park. In fact, I would venture to say outside of Bowie, when the playground was, was up and going, and I know it'll, it'll be back soon, it's probably the most frequented place in the city, um, in the summertime. So, it's, it's used and it's, it's a benefit. There's not a whole lot for our kids to do out here. So, I would, um, I would encourage you, I would ask you, uh, if there's any way possible for you to support both the field resurfacing and the, the, uh, lighting, uh, that you do it, that you take whatever action's appropriate and, and that can be done to, to assist us with that. Thank you.
Shannon, I have a question. So, you're asking the city for the 218-9 basically, plus the 17?
No, I'm not asking the city for the whole.
One minute, okay.
Yes. I mean, if the city was in a position to do that, great. I, I don't think, I think the county would be ready to get, get it done sooner rather than later, but I think what I'm asking at this point is that we have, we have put out, I've broken this up into sort of two different projects. The field resurfacing, we've got about $17,000 left on that. The, the 218, I feel comfortable that by the end of this season, which will end July, I feel comfortable we'll have about $40,000 that we can contribute toward the lights. So, do the math from there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Shannon. I will say that I sent Commissioner Jones a email asking him what the county plan was and of course, he bumped it right up the ladder, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm the county plan. Thank y'all for letting me come here tonight or this afternoon to share some information with you.
If you'll just, if you'll, I, I'm, if you'll just tell us your name for the record.
Yes, absolutely. My name is Gordon Hampton and I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation for Williamson County. So, as Shannon stated, uh, you know, very eloquently and, and he was very thorough with his explanation, I don't need to revisit any of that. What I'm here to share with you today is, is the process of talking about money, uh, because that's really the most important thing to try to do it. The need has been established and, and I second everything that he said. At this point in time in our budget process in the county, borrowing some type of a, of a late file resolution that Commissioner Jones would have to really get on quickly, the last budget meeting of this fiscal year, or excuse me, the last county commission meeting where they're going to hear resolutions is next Monday night. The county commission meeting in July, excuse me, in June will be used to approve the budget. There's just been some administrative changes in the calendar. Instead of doing that in July now, the county is approving the fiscal budget this year going forward in June. Uh, so it'll be done, you know, before the, uh, it's always done sort of in arrears. So, that's, that's changing. As a result, any business that'll be brought before the county, uh, in the form of resolution has to happen in the May meeting because the June meeting will strictly be a budget approval meeting. And then, like I said, that meeting will occur. And then, like I said, that meeting will occur next Monday night, which is always the second Monday in each month. At this point in time, we are committed to helping with the field renovation. I would have a number for Shannon and for you right now, having not been for the fact that Phyllis Hufman, who is my Budget Director, has been over her head and knee-deep in preparing for the Renaissance Festival that the county is doing this year. And so, she's been on that site for about the past six or seven working days, and she's been unable to really give me the specific amount of money that we can contribute. But we're getting to the end of our budget, and we know that we will be able to have money available for this. We might be able to take care of the whole balance, or we might be able to just take care of a portion of it. But we are 100% committed to contributing to the field renovation. And I should know that by, you know, the first part of next week. And then, I'll get with Shannon on that, and then he can share that with you guys if you wanted to try to, you know, contribute to that, you know, this go-around. As far as the lights go, once again, I agree with everything that he said about the lights. The use of the park, it's an extremely busy place in this community. It's always been a focal point. Parks and Recreation is glad to be back in partnership with the folks that are involved with the Community Recreation Association. We're committed to investing money in Fairview, in Parks and Recreation, and there's no doubt that we want to see improvements. We currently are in the middle of a comprehensive master plan for Parks and Recreation, and that includes the Fairview community. You know, as you well know, we provide services throughout the whole county, and we work closely with all the municipalities in the county. So, our standard operating procedure is we look out for everybody's interests, and where there are opportunities to work with municipalities for special projects, we do that. Typically, that, the understanding there is that we would work on a 50-50 partnership, and that has been proven successful, you know, throughout the county. And we've done everything from small projects to, you know, huge projects. We've split 20,000, I mean, excuse me, $20 million rec centers with municipalities before. So, you can see that we're committed to that model. In this particular case, we do not have any money allocated for lights, other than something that Commissioner Jones might be able to pull together at the last minute. And I don't think the chances of him doing that are very likely, to be quite honest with you. So, that leads us to the lighting project happening sometime between now and the tournament, which is scheduled for August of 2023. Going back to the master plan, one of the things that will come out of the master plan is changing all of the ballfields in Williamson County from the traditional metal halo lights that are in all of our parks, with the exception of anything that we brought online recently, to LED lighting. It will, as Shannon mentioned, save the county a tremendous amount of money, not only in cost and energy savings, but those lights last much longer than the, as he mentioned, the replacing of the metal halo bulbs that just burn out, because they're a gas bulb. And, you know, and right now, we have lights out all over the county because a couple of things. One, it's a manpower shortage for people that are skilled and have the ability to get in the boom trucks and go up there and change the lights. Number two, we've had to contract with an additional service provider, because our regular company, Reynolds Electric out of Dixon, is so overwhelmed right now, they can't even get to all the lights that are out. So, we've brought in Rain's Electric to assist us with that, and we are way behind. So, there's a lot of reasons for us to change over to LED lighting. I don't have a timeline ahead of anything that I can share with you about the adoption of the comprehensive master plan, and as a result, any consequential lighting projects that would come online. I would love to be able to say that we know that this will be approved in late fall of '22, and that those lights would be part of a plan for '23 or '24, but I can't look at each one of you and tell you that for certain. What I can tell you is, if you want to move to the front of the line for a project like this, we do not necessarily have to wait for a master plan to be adopted. If the city of Fairview chose to want to enter into a partnership to enhance the light system that's at the park, all you have to do is initiate that with these first steps towards funding a project like that. Now, specifically, I think there are a few things that need to be brought to your attention as well as Mr. Crutcher, because, you know, I've mentioned this to him. Because of the guidelines that we have to work through, through purchasing, anything that would be at a value of, you know, over $200,000, you know, actually, it's over $25,000, it has to go through a bid process. So, even if we wanted to use the contractors and the services that have been presented to all of us, you know, we would have to actually go through a bid process for that. And there's another option. You can always bypass a bid project by doing two things. One, buying something off of a purchasing co-op, and there are several of those out there that are in existence. I'm sure the city manager is fully aware of, you know, how these purchasing co-ops work, and you can find, you know, lighting companies that do that. And there might be an opportunity, you know, between now and then, for this particular company to find its way onto one of those purchasing co-op boards. That's one way to do it. The other way to get what you want, if it's that specific or particular, you know, company, would be for this organization through your Parks Department or through your channels to initiate the work and ask for us to contribute back to you. And then, that way, you can select who you want, and whatever process that you go through as an entity, and we just work from it from a back angle, which we would give money back to the city of Fairview, where you would pay the bill, instead of it being the other way around. So, that way, you could purchase what you want unless you're bound by the same, you know, buying and purchasing regulations that we are at the county level. And I can't answer that for this body. So, those are the options that are available for us to try to put this on the fast track. We are committed to doing it. We want to see it done, but as of this moment, you know, on Cinco de Mayo 2022, we do not have any funds that are dedicated to this project. But that does not mean that there's not a way to get this done by this time next year. So, with all that being said, I don't want to take up any more of your time, and I'd be glad to answer, you know, any questions that you might have about possibilities.
This reminds me of when I told my son that he could buy his own tennis shoes, and I might pay him back. So, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you started talking about the lights, you were talking about maintenance, and then you kind of launched into special projects. So, are you saying that maintenance of the lights would be considered a special project?
No, ma'am. The maintenance of the current lighting, the lighting system that is at the park right now, is not a special project. It is ongoing, regular operating maintenance.
So, are the lights of the ballfield now sufficient? I mean, they work if they're all replaced? If the bulbs are working, they work?
Yes, ma'am. They will work if we can replace all the bulbs, but as Mr. Crutcher said, we could replace the bulbs on Monday, and by Saturday, we could have six more that would be out.
Same way at my house. I understand completely. Okay. Right now, that's all the questions I have.
All right.
Well, no, I have one more. So, if we decided to fast-track this and do the purchasing ourselves, which I believe we have to go through the same process that you do, but just if we did that, and you paid us back, how much would you pay us?
We would pay you half of it.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Anyone else in the board have questions?
Looking into, just kind of looking into some of the different companies that offer this type of lighting with LED, I mean, everything I've seen is half a million and up. So, I've spoken with Helios Energy, and they're willing to donate quite a bit. That's why the price is the way it is, which I think is a positive for all of us to think about. I know there's a process to go through, but I just, I see this cost, and then I looked at, researched the others, and it's more than double, triple almost.
You're correct.
So, that's, I know, because I researched it before I, you know, spoke with Shannon about it. So, I just, you know, wanted to put that out there, so.
And, you know, you're absolutely right. As we have been bringing new athletic lighting onboard, we've been doing, using Musco, and that is probably considered to be the elite sports lighting package in the industry, and it is considerably more expensive than this product. What we would do from the master plan perspective is we would use Musco lighting at all of the parks, and the reason that we would do that is just from a uniformity, from a maintenance standpoint, so that all of our systems operate off of the same system. And, you know, these systems are all remote control. You can turn the lights on and off from your telephone. The maintenance of getting bulbs replaced with Musco, you know, and I'm sure Helios has a great warranty as well, but their warranties run anywhere from 10 years to 20 years, and you never have to spend a dime. So, these are things that you also, you know, that we, as a county agency, take into consideration when we make these choices when it comes to sports lighting, is what that long-term maintenance cost actually will be. And, you know, they have a proven track record. But I'm always willing and excited about doing business with someone else that could provide the same service, and if it lessens the burden on the taxpayer, then I think we should really look into it, strongly consider it.
And this company, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
This company, I mean, I don't know these people personally. I've just done some research. This company has done many schools, so they're not like, you know, inexperienced. And, you know, we can research more about that, but they, they're not a company that's come in that, you know, doesn't have experience with like schools and ballfields that have to do with, you know, what we're kind of looking at, so.
So, just so I understand, so the improvement to Fairview ballfields is, will be part of the master plan? It's just not going to be as quickly as?
Yes, ma'am. That is 100% correct.
Thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Hampton, thank you for coming out. Really appreciate that. I do have a question for Mr. Crutcher.
Sir.
What else have we done just to look at grants, other fundraising in preparation for 2023 with your group?
Yeah, I mean, we're just getting started. We're still in the infancy of planning for that event, and in fact, the first meeting of the committee for the World Series was about two weeks ago, and we're trying to assign various roles to various people to, because this is going to be a big event. But certainly, corporate fundraising is going to be part of that. There's, we have not applied for any grant. I'm not aware of there being any grant. I'm not, not my area of expertise. I've never applied for a grant or research grant, so I don't know if there's something out there or not. My experience with grants, though, having sit where you guys sit, is there's always fine print, and if you're not careful in what you ask for, you end up with maintenance costs and various other things that you didn't necessarily plan for. See median, middle of Highway 100. So, to answer your question, no, we've not looked at anything else. There's certainly some private donors that have children that participate in sports at the ballpark, that have the ability to donate money, and I don't think that's out of the question, but we've not got any firm commitment.
And I'll just make general comment about providing money to this specific plan here. Want to level set, my kids are at the ballpark all the time as well, and looking at, you know, where we spent our money in the city of Fairview and where we focus, I think Oliver Williamson County rec centers, both the ballfields and the rec center itself, should be part of our master plan for all of our parks. I truly believe that, because that's where our citizens spend their time. They spend their time there, they spend their money there, that's where the kids also are. Saying that, right now, we're kind of looking at our park system as a whole, and where, what is the priority? Where are we hemorrhaging right now? Where is the priority? If we don't fix something immediately, is it going to cost us thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands potentially later? And with this project right here, I'm kind of looking, and the city has the opportunity, right, what can we spend from the budget currently? What can we earmark, allocate? Is that $1,000? Is that $80,000? And we're going through this process currently of looking at all of our parks, Triangle Park, Veterans Park, Bowie Park, and what truly are our priorities? You know, we're trying to get our comprehensive plan together specifically for our parks, have a subject matter expert come in and truly tell us, not only where should we spend our money first? Is this a, is the ballfield a place where we should spend immediately $20,000 to allocate for lights? Or should we fix something at Bowie that is going to be catastrophic down the line if we don't? I'm hesitant, because we don't have a clear picture currently. On the flip side of that, I know that the ballfields are highly utilized, and when you go out there on the weekends, there are hundreds of kids and family members out there, and it's, I think, an important part of our ecosystem here in the city of Fairview. Baseball is big, softball is big, and we've got a huge event coming up too. So, it's just a, man, it's a tough position that we're in, trying to determine what is the priority today. With the POPSY Committee, we're starting to peel back that onion, and we're identifying things that we probably need to put some money into immediately, and then, how much money do we have in the budget where we can allocate those funds? So, I appreciate you both coming up, and for the FRA to come forward and say, hey, listen, we have a plan, because you're certainly bettering the city of Fairview and the opportunity for our kids and the families. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Hampton, thank you for coming. You can thank me later for not making you sit through our budget rating.
I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And good luck with your budget, and good luck with everything that you're doing here. It is nice to be partners with you guys, and, you know, we do want to see a lot of exciting things in this community. And as you do progress with your master plan, I know I shared with Scott some folks that have helped us with ours, and so, there's some really competent people out there that can do a good job, like they're doing for us, and I think it'll be a good step in the direction of improving things for your citizens here by doing that, so I can wish you good luck.
On a personal note, I feel like I need to tell you, there's a lizard in the rec center.
It's legged or four-legged?
No, it's four-legged, and part of its tail is missing, but it's lurking in my office. So, if you could send someone out there to get that out of my.
Y'all, y'all have got too much food back there. You get the creatures. I'm glad y'all are there, and, you know, that's just another example of how that facility is a huge space.
It is, thank you.
And we're blessed that you're there, along the lanes, and everybody else to use that space.
Well, you can have the lizard back, though.
All right, we'll try to get him out.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you, Shannon. And it was nice to meet you. It's your show again.
Does, do we need, anyone need to take a quick break before we get? This will take us probably 30 or 40 minutes just to run through. So if everyone's good, we're?
Does anyone want to take a break? Break?
Okay.
We're good, you've got it.
So, so let me run down some, there's probably one of the most important line items in these 26 pages. And there's some discussions to have at the end of this, but just, I want to highlight some information for you that is really important. If you look at page one of 24, if you look at the column, the operating account column, just so you'll, you'll kind of understand where we are and how we function somewhat lean within the city. Just to kind of highlight this, the very first line under operating account, beginning balance, that's what we project to have in the operating account to start the budget year on July 1, okay? If you look at the last line at the bottom of that column, it shows, and that should be fiscal, fiscal year ending 2023. But if you look at that last line, you'll see that the balance is $2,571,695. The reason I, the reason I highlight that is to let you know that we are anticipating with this budget to start the year with $2,570 in operating and end of the year with $2,571,695. So there's not a large surplus of money left over. When we operate leanly, we, we, we truly operate lean. So there's not, within this budget, there's just not a whole lot of wiggle room that the city has to add cost or expense. Now, there have been some changes in the budget, we'll get into that in just a few minutes. But just so everyone understands, we, we function as a city pretty lean. And that's kind of just a, that's a highlight of where it is. So we're not going to end the year with a massive amount of money to figure out what to do. We're, we're anticipating the end of the year flat from where we start this year. That's, that's first item. The second item is just a reminder that when we do our budgets, it's been our practice that we don't budget for revenue increases. We budget each year off the current year's revenue. We learned a couple of years ago, I think a lot of local governments did, that projecting revenue increases typically get you in trouble. Another COVID come through, some external factor or risk arrives. So when we get through the budget, you'll see that we haven't projected a whole lot of, of revenue increase because we're a little bit afraid of projecting revenue increase. Until we know we have those dollars in the bank, they don't exist for us. So we really work off of, of being cautious with that. The result of that has been what Fairview had not been able to do in the past, which has been fund our reserve fund. At the end of each year, we'll get into this a little bit later in the, in the council meeting, but what we have been able to do is establish that reserve fund. And right now, we're working toward having a reserve fund that would equal 20% of our operating account. So, and that's by ordinance, we did that a couple of years ago now. So when we get through these line items and the revenue, just know that these are built somewhat snug. There's also the inclusion this year, the coming up budget year, which is the first year for the bond issue, debt service payments. There's been a little bit of an upswing. We knew there was going to be an upswing in that, we had an upswing in revenue as well. But the purpose of this recap is just to let you know that the budget outside of what we'll go over tonight, there's not a lot of room to move. There's a little room within it, but not a lot of room within it. So with that, I'll just kind of start. I do have over the course of a budget, some, some items that were brought about during the year that I want to express and have some conversations with as we get into. So with that, page one of 24 is simply the recap. When you see your budget ordinance two weeks from tonight, your budget ordinance will have three sections. It'll have the general fund, the state street aid, and the drug fund. Drug fund is mandated by state to be standalone. State street aid is mandated by state to be standalone. Everything else that you see on here will be combined into the general fund for our ordinance. That's, that's by state code. We break this out to be more restrictive. So if anyone at any time wanted to know, hey, there were $200 deposited into the Tree Bank Fund and $200 were spent, what's that for? We break that out by budget so anyone can answer that question. So moving into the worksheet, and, and these are somewhat not glamorous, but all of this is important as we, as we get in. So page two of 24 is our, our general fund operating revenue. Typically, these are dollars that most cities in some way or form are going to, to bring in anyway. It's just standard operating. The, the three largest are property taxes for the year, local option sales taxes for the year. Those are line items one and two. And then about halfway down the page, you'll see a number of $1 million. That is state sales taxes. Those are dollars that come back to us from the state. So those are our three largest sources of general fund operating revenue. And again, those go to pay for the basic fuel, personnel cost, operating cost, maintenance, repair, capital, that sort of thing. Yes. Local option sales taxes, when, when you go to purchase something in the city of Fairview, you pay 9.75% sales tax. 7% of that goes to the state of Tennessee. The other 2.75 are called local sales taxes and they're redistributed by the counties back to the, to the municipalities. So local option, the reason I call it local option is because up to a threshold of 2.75%, municipalities and counties have the authority to, to increase or decrease their sales tax. It being their option, it's the local option sales tax. They've opted to have their rate at 2.75. That's the max that we can have in the state and that's where that local option is. Yes, ma'am.
How is the state sales tax distributed? Is that a, a per population count?
It, it is. And, and we get those dollars for the state and the local two months in arrears. So for example, when we get our distributions of those in February, we'll see where it's a February receipt, but those, we're receiving February, the money we receive in February was collected in December. We're always about two months behind on that. So typically, your January, February, maybe March will be your big receipt months of the year because of your Christmas spending, depending on if that happened in November or December. But that's how, that's how we get those dollars. And then the only other, the large amount of money is about one-third down the page. You'll see $250,000 in the facilities fund. Just below that, you'll see $300,000 in building permits. That's the distribution of that. You, you may recall that we discussed a few minutes ago, we don't take 100% of our building permit revenue and allocate it to our operations. We think that's risky for every community. So we break that out into capital and we try to put those dollars into capital so we don't depend on those. If there's a year we can't do capital, we can likely survive it. If there's a year that we can't pay operating expenses, that presents us a problem. So that's, that's how that's broken out. And then over to the right in the middle of the page, you'll see an amount of $326,000. That's state street aid money. That's money that comes from the state for maintenance, repair of roads, capital improvements of, of roads in that nature. You recall that we approved at the last meeting a resurfacing bid of $206,000 and change for various streets throughout the city. That $206,000 will come from that state's street aid revenue that, that we've gotten in.
How's that revenue calculated? How does, how's that dispersed?
The state also, there's a, it's a little bit more complicated formula than just the, the population. There's also calculation for gasoline taxes collected and other things. So I'm sure they have a greater, larger discussion of how that is, but that's our portion of that. It's a combination of those two. There will all, there will also be, as a part of that, there's, there will always be a discussion and this is something that the city will have to look out loud for in the future. Unless there's a raising of that tax, if gasoline taxes and fuel taxes redistributed to the municipalities stay on the same percentage, but the fuel economy of vehicles increase, then the less fuel being purchased for a higher economy vehicle, the less dollars you'll get back into your city for, for those. So at some point, to make ends meet, the city will have to apply some of its dollars to resurfacing and road projects, because if you look at that metric, it's typically going backwards. It just is a part of that thing. So there's always the, the question of the federal government requiring the increase of fuel mileage by vehicles. But if you're getting greater fuel mileage on a vehicle, you're purchasing less fuel, therefore you're receiving less fuel tax dollars. So how that's managed does come into play for the long term. And then if you also tackle in asphalt costs, which are directly related to oil expenses and fuel, it can be complicated. So that's one we have to be careful with long term. The next page, three of 24, other revenues. Other revenues are just that. These are other revenues that would not be standard revenues for, for a municipality. As an example, if you look at the last line on, on the budget under operating, you'll see employee Blue Cross, Blue Shield contributions. That's not a standard revenue. That's not an outside source. That's money that the city takes in from its employees to pay for that health insurance. So other revenues are just that. Things that wouldn't be standard are generally seen in likewise at different municipalities across, across the state or across the region. In the middle, in the middle of the page to the right, you'll see the stormwater program account. It's showing ARP funding, a revenue of $1,356,871. That's the second half of the revenue that we'll get from the federal government this year for the recovery plan. Those dollars will go right into stormwater capital management. We are required as a part of the ARP or the, that fund, we're required to have those dollars allocated for specific projects, not expended, but allocated for specific projects no later than December 31, 2025. So we do have some time to identify what those projects will be, but we have to have them identified by December 31, 2025. We also have to do an annual fiscal report to, to the feds for the expenditure of those dollars. Our report is due on April 30 of each year. I completed ours last week. And each year we'll have to go back and identify what's allocated, what's spent until the dollars are exhausted, as long as we can allocate the dollars by project. Within that report, I have committed 100% of those that are balance and income dollars to stormwater management and infrastructure. So it meets that, it meets that service and that was submitted and accepted. So we are a bit ahead of schedule on the commitment of the dollars. We're just not prepared at this point to identify the specific projects. And we have about three years before we have to, three and a half. The ADA sidewalk waiver revenue mayor is, you may recall that I believe three years ago, the city adopted an ordinance to where if a developer goes to the planning commission and they have, the city has a sidewalk requirement, but that, that project does not make sense for a variety of reasons that sidewalks be installed, then the city can authorize a one-time receipt from that developer that will be equivalent to 75% of the sidewalk cost. So if you, if there's a development that comes in and for whatever reason, based on topography, use, what have you, the developer can request that rather than installing the sidewalks, they make a 75% sidewalk cost contribution to this. We then use that money to make improvements to sidewalk projects across, across the city. Part of that money, we have $48,000 in our coffers today that came from that. Part of that money will be used to replace the sidewalks at the playground. So we go in there, we do that work for that, then that sidewalk cost, some of those dollars will be used to do the sidewalk work for, for the playground project. So that's an eligible use and that's where those dollars will come from. Again, non-recurring, so we're careful of that. You see that we show revenue of none this year. Two months from now, we could have a developer come in and, and make that request and we would simply put those dollars in the bank and then apply them to a future year, a future budget on qualifying expense. Over to the right, they see bonds and other programs. These are typically some grant programs that, that come in. For an example, the middle of the page, on the far right-hand column, you see $33,600. And that's money that comes in from the state. That's the subsistence money, $800 per employee that goes to police and fire. Those dollars come in under a grant program. They'll be expended in those departments' budgets as an, as an expense. Applying to that grant, there'll be a zero balance for the, for the annual dollars that come in. The next page, page four of 24. And now we're getting into the expenditures by department. And, and most of what we're going to talk about or go through is going to be fairly standard, but there are some throughout this budget I need to highlight. Page four of 24 does have some of those. If you'll look about two-thirds down the page, to the left, you're going to see line items that are travel training mayor, travel training seats one, two, three, and four. Those are budgeted at $500 each. Each city commissioner and the mayor does have training money available. So if there's a class conference or some other thing that you want to, to go to, there is $500 a year available for each of your training. The way we do those, because we don't have, we don't have districts and we don't have to, want to have to rename this every year. For travel and training seats one through four, we identify those internally by alphabetical order. We will forevermore have four seats, but we outline those. So let's say that Commissioner Lucas were to come in and he wants to go to a training class and it's $200. Then Lucas starts with an L, that will be seat four. So we would charge that to seat four. Wherever you fall in alphabetical order would be your seat as far as the budgeting process for us. The reason we do that, so we don't have to every year name specific names or every two years name specific names if they change in a budget for training. The, the below lines that are a returning item to, to the budget. In 2017, 18, and 19, we allocated district development or community development funds to the elected officials and the mayor. Those community development funds are not, they were called at one time discretionary dollars. They're not really discretionary dollars. We can't take those and pay for things that the city would normally pay for. However, it is not uncommon for an elected official to be asked to provide funding or to support funding for a certain this or that, a certain program calls. Someone may ask you for, hey, do you think you could help me get $1,000 for improvements at the library? Right, some, we use that as an example. It, it's always helpful if we bake those into the budget. So when you get these requests for funding, we do have some dollars available out there that can be used to, to, to provide those small funding requests. So it's just a tool that each of our elected officials have, because you're all going to get various requests, various items. You want to make sure that to the extent we can, we can try and fund some of those smaller things throughout the year. So if that happens, again, we'll say the library, they come in, they call up, hey, you know, we're looking for $500 for whatever item that it is. If this dollar's here and it meets the, meets a request that the city would do, simply let us know what that is. If it meets what the city could spend money on, we would just simply cut them a check for whatever that balance is, that would apply to whatever district or community number, seat number, applied alphabetically internally.
Got a question about those, those funds. So Mr. Collins, if, if we have, let's say, a committee, for example, outside of the BOC and, and we're providing refreshments for the committee, things of that nature, would, would that fall under that category or what, what does that look like?
No, we have another line item in administration for that.
Okay.
So that would not be, it wouldn't be intended to buy, say you're doing the, the park operational plan committee and you're going to buy dinner that night for that thing.
Right.
We would not charge that to the district development. We would charge that to meals under admin or miscellaneous committees. The purpose of these dollars is tangible something, thing that, that you could see.
Okay.
Again.
So, so speaking on, on that, is it, any type of, what am I thinking? What's the word that has escaped me? Nonprofit? If we have a nonprofit that we want to allocate money to?
Generally, yes. They, they would, in, in that case, they would need to submit a request outlining, outlining what it's going to be used for.
Okay.
Right? You get into a little bit of service. I had this conversation today with someone. Let's briefly talk about the View U CRC. Let's take that as an example. They come in and say, hey, Commissioner Collins, do you think you have $1,000 to, to put toward this thing?
Right.
What I expressed to one of their members or advocates? What I expressed to one of their members or advocates today was the city, tax dollars are restricted in use in a, in a variety of ways. So let's take a nonprofit, for example. Let's say they come in and they say, hey, we're looking for $1,000 to help us operate and do those things, right? Well, if they bring something back and say that they need that $1,000 for operating and they can break down what, what that is. Hey, Commissioner Collins, we really looking for $1,000 for a new computer for our nonprofit. No problem, that's easy to do. That's been eligible expense because that's an operating expense that they, that they have. A distribution expense, if they come in and say, hey, Mr. Collins, I have five people who need $200 worth of groceries. Could the city provide us $1,000? No. So with that, we would just need to be careful as to what they're stating the use of those dollars are. Now, if they state that they're using those dollars for $1,000 or using that $1,000 for a computer and we distribute that to them, it's their responsibility to ensure that that, that computer will at some point exist. And I hope that answers the question.
It does, yes.
Operationally, yes, that's not an issue. Functionally, whatever their purpose is, is a bit of a gray area and we just need to identify the gray area. But anytime we can ensure that we're helping them with their operations, yes, you, you can do that. Operational costs are qualifying expense.
Perfect, thank you.
Like the money that was allotted for the View CRC last year, they gave you a breakdown of exactly what they spent that on?
They did not, we, I asked for that this year. First, it was going to be their operations is how that was provided. Once we got the information back, because I asked specifically, if you recall, the question to the view was, the city provided them $12,000 for operational costs. They then had a fundraising effort. And in that fundraising effort, they remitted $21,000 to the city for the playground. So our conversation at the time, does it make sense? If the view's stated objective is to provide funds to those needs in, in the, in the community, then there's a capital operational expense the view's going to have, right? They're going to have to have someone to, you assume, pay an insurance premium, a computer, cellphone, operational costs, website maintenance. Whatever it is they do, the maintenance and operation of the view would be qualifying expense. That would be easy. How they distribute their dollars or not. So, or how they would. So when, when I asked for specific requests for funding for them this year, the list that they provided for their funding requests were for individual resident cost. Provide someone money for a battery for a car. Provide someone money for groceries. Provide someone money for a health insurance bill that they had. Those are not qualifying in any way. So as it relates to the view, my, my request to them was present us your operational plan so we can know what your overhead costs are to operate that. That will be our investment to fund the operations, which would be qualifying. Now however they generate money in the future, if they had taken their $21, $21,000 and applied it to their needs, their purpose, no harm. But the idea that we would distribute them $12,000 to then redistribute to community needs, but then be able to sustain their self-help fundraising effort and remit a charitable contribution back to the city is counter to the operation that, that we would engage in.
I have a, I have a real problem with that. So I'm glad that we're reevaluating because I don't think it's a good idea for us to provide them money in the budget and then now they're the top donor for the playground with, and we donated to them and now they're donating back to us. That just seemed off to me.
Yeah, so, so how they chose to, to take the money that they raised and redistribute it, for, for our, operationally, that's their decision to do. But from a, from a funding perspective, in the city, it is very difficult to look at what they asked for going forward and look at the usage for that, knowing that they're not a qualifying use. So that's how we kind of hit that impasse. As I told them, the representative from them today, we don't have anything in, in this budget for, for them. And again, we didn't have very little room, wiggle room within the budget. But what I told them was annually, we revise or amend our budget. If they want to present a funding request that outlines specifically their capital operation and needs, if they do that in December, it could consider, be considered by you at the January amended budget. But within that, there's nothing going forward in this budget for that. So what was presented to you tonight for adoption does not include in fund, does not include funding to the view. That's page four of 24. And I'll, I'm going to run through some of these because most of these pages are boilerplate where we were. As we talked about when we passed the amended budget, the amended budget was very close to this budget. So there's not a lot of change, but I do want to highlight some things that the board is going to need to discuss budgetarily. They won't have a financial impact, but they will have an operational impact. Page five of 24. That's administration personnel. Nothing changed from where we were in the amended budget to operating or to this. The operating budget, page six of 24. Again, these are standards for, for operating cost. As you go up and down the, this budget, you'll see certain, certain line items, but we attempt to break out everything to the extent we can. So we're not using line items for non, non-line item purposes. As an example, we have a lot of line items where we break out everything. The best example I can give you for this is years ago, the, the general ledger that we have was very small. So let's, let's take a department that bought uniforms as an example. They would have a budget for uniforms and a budget for office supplies. Well, they may be halfway through the year and spent very little money in office supplies, but they may have exhausted their uniform line item. Well, when they purchased uniforms the next time, so they didn't go over budget on their line item, they would charge those uniform expenses to office supplies. Well, that's not a real marker of what you're spending on all of your line items. So we break all of this out and we tell our department heads, if you are going to be over in a line item, please continue to charge to that line item so we can manage our cost year to year for what our actual expenses are. So that's why you see all of these things broken out. We want to be as specific as we can so we can ensure that our costs are accurate and we're budgeting correctly. So six of 24 standard, there's nothing on six of 24 that jumps out in any way operationally. Seven of 24, the only number that, that jumps out is Williamson County Dispatch at $96,000. Last year it was $91,000. They increased that number to about $96,000. The police chief, fire chief and I are going to meet with the management over at Williamson County Dispatch. We're going to have to come to a long-term solution to that. You may recall a couple of years ago, the request that they had to us was $212,000, I think, for operating dispatch. We know we can't dispatch our police and fire for $96,000 a year. But we are talking to them some about the sharing of dispatch. Right now, the dispatchers that we use generally, dispatch for Nolansville and the city of Fairview. So we're going to have some talks about how that goes forward as far as future funding of that or what that's going to look like if there's going to be some shared cost for dispatch. As, as a side note to that, we get questions all the time, why does every address in Fairview start with a seven? The reason for that is for dispatch. If you have centralized dispatch and Williamson County uses centralized dispatch, the only agency that does not use Williamson County is Brentwood. So if you have a Jones Road address, then if you have, every area has a 2,500 Jones Road, then who do I dispatch? If the call goes out to 2,500 Jones Road. So for our purposes, for dispatch, we are the 7,000 series of addresses. So if a call comes into 7,000 Jones Road, dispatch knows that that's Fairview. If it's 1,100, that may be Nolansville. If it's 2,500, it may be Franklin. But the purpose of that is to identify who you dispatch to those calls based on the address series, not the name of the street. So kind of a side note is how we arrive at those numbers. Page eight of 24. The, the next page you have in the, under facilities fund, in the middle of the page, the Motorola lease, we have $119,000. That will expire. We're going into our final year to pay for that lease. So in future years, that $119,000 will come back to us for a future expense. So that's not a long-term expense. That's one we had to get into. We went into the radio system we have. Just know that $119,000 in 2024 makes its way back to us as available dollars to be spent. That, that goes away. The page before this had a Motorola maintenance and licensing. It was $27,000. That $27,000 at the top of that page is what we pay for, for the future maintenance and upkeep. So we pay that $27,000. If next year we pay out on these radios, but there's an update to be done for our radios, we've paid that out annually through that maintenance agreement. And every radio system user in the county is required to pay that maintenance. So everyone stays on the same updated radio system. Next page.
Mr. Collins, I have a question about the Williamson County Health Department.
Okay.
So the $15,000, what does that cover?
So in, in brief discussion, the $15,000 is a direct funding that the city engaged to, I believe in 2009, for operational expenses for Williamson County Health Department. As a part of the contract that was, that the city had with Williamson County Health Department, it also, over and above the $15,000, required the city to perform certain maintenance. As an example, the city under that contract was responsible for everything on the outside of the building and everything mechanical on the inside of the building. So by those contracts, the city would pay them $15,000 one time. But if the next month, the HVAC unit went bad, the city was on the hook to maintain the HVAC unit. This year, or really last year, there were, the contracts were still in place. This year, we don't have an executed contract with Williamson County and Williamson County Health Department specific to that. I think we need to go back and identify what we're getting for that $15,000 and identify what we're getting in future maintenance costs and assessments for the building. So much so that as recently as four hours ago, actually six hours ago, I received a request from the health department for two things. One was to spray the flower beds because there are weeds growing in the flower beds, which last year we replaced the flower beds as a part of that agreement. They asked that we spray and weed the flower bed this year and then pressure wash the sidewalks to and from the building. So that would, that would fall within our, with our maintenance agreement. In fact, when we do our mowing bid, one of the places that we put on the mowing bid is the health department. So when you see the mowers out there, those are part of the contract that the city has had in the past. I'm not a fan of that contract. That's why we haven't presented one to renew this year. We've been operating this year on kind of a handshake deal. Mr. Potter has sent back to Williamson County a concern specific to that, that contract and, and the content of it. So until we get that back, we'll work with them, but we're not going to bind ourselves contractually to continue to provide those services.
I know it doesn't have anything to do with the, the budget here, but I would like a presentation or some type of facts and figures, some data from, from them, just to, what are the citizens of Fairview actually paying for? This, by services rendered?
Sure, and, and that's part of our request to do that. So that's why we haven't engaged in anything to them. So before we engage in a future contract with them, we'll make sure we have all that information presented.
Great, thank you.
We have the same concerns as everyone else. $15,000 is not a lot of money. My big concern is the greater liability to the city for the maintenance operating of it. So that's, that's why we haven't done anything.
And rumor has it, they're trying to close that building, by the way. They're trying to close that location.
Yeah, that has not been expressed to me, but I, so I don't know that.
Well, no, that's rumor has it.
Next page nine of 24, we'll kind of get into some of the mundane. Nine of 24 is municipal court, standard operating budget for municipal court. We do, in the personnel cost for municipal court, we have included a, a part-time employee to work in court just to help with data entry. There's a lot that goes on in municipal court and we just, when you have court, we have court every two weeks. We have bond hearings every other two, every week we have a hearing of some sort. Every other Thursday, we have court. And I don't know if you've been by here on municipal court days, but it is complete, full building down to Highway 100 and it is typically a full day event. That happens every other Thursday. On the off Thursdays, we have bond hearings remotely where the judge, court staff, some police meeting here, we do bond hearings remotely with people who are in, currently being held in Williamson County or another holding facility, determine bond reductions if, if they're applicable.
So did you say that, that that's current, that new position is in this budget?
It is. It's in, it's in what you see here.
Okay.
We also, there's a, there is including that also an increase in the judge's pay. Right now, the, the judge's pay is $26,000 a year. This budget is up to that to $32,000. The reason for that is we've doubled the days of the month that the, that the judge has to, to work. The court dates are what the court dates are, but we've added two days a month for bond hearings. That's, that's kind of expensive time for whoever the judge would be. So, so to, to attempt to compensate for that, the bond hearings do save us a bit of money because we don't have to transport. So overall budget numbers, if you look at the big number of the budget, that's a wash. We're just really increasing the amount of time that the judge has to, to spend being judge and decreasing some of the time that our police have to spend on court functions.
Okay, so the judge pays, was $32,000?
It was 26. This includes 32.
Okay, but he's working two additional days.
Correct. Next, next page, page 10 of 24, finance. Again, standard boilerplate cost of finance, there's no issue there. Practically no change at all. Planning Department, page 11 of 24. Again, no changes in the planning department. We've not made any, any additions there. So those are standard to us. This will be the first full year that we had the second engineer. But that's an incredible benefit to us, as we all know. Page 12 of 24 is the operations for the planning department. Most of our operations, I'm sorry, planning department is not engineering department. That, the engineers on the next set. Operations for the planning department, they're all substantially the same. Commissioner Dawson, you mentioned a question about a, a park operational plan committee or some other thing, if there's a cost or expense there. There's an example for that and I won't go back up. But if you look at the middle of the page, and I know I don't have this highlighted, so I apologize, but you'll see a line item that says, computer equipment, computer software, miscellaneous IT. The next line is ZBA expenses, other, $100. If we had a zoning board of adjustment meeting and we need to do an advertisement or provide them a meal or some other cost, that, that's where we would charge that line item to. Similarly, if we had to do that for the park operational plan, we would put that in admin either under a meals or under sundry. If we had to do too many of those, we would break out sundry the following year and make sure that's what that is. So, but we do attempt to cover as many unforeseen costs as we can and put a place for them. Page 13 of 24, the engineering department. No changes in the engineering department staffing from what we have now. That's just the standard cost of, of where we are. The next page, 14 of 24, operations for the planning department. No substantial changes in the planning department except for, if you look in the middle of the page, in the center, you'll see a number of $60,000. That $60,000 is for stormwater management equipment being paid for out of the stormwater program account. As we get into stormwater management, the management of stormwater, storm drain calculations, how the city prepares, some of the workflow and some of the information necessary to make changes to the stormwater system globally, as we know it, requires some specialized equipment. As an example, if you look at the Chester Road corridor, we know that the drainage that makes its way under Chester Road starts at the middle school and high school. That's a broad path of property and a broad path of properties, roads, drainage, all that comes into, how do we mitigate some of that? We don't have the equipment that it takes to facilitate some of those things. Some of those are hard equipment, some of those are software. All of it eligible under this and at no expense to the fairview taxpayer. But that's equipment that we will have to purchase to successfully start our stormwater program and certainly as we transition into MS4. Page 15 of 24, the next, next page, police department. There's nothing of substance on page 15 or 15 of 24. The next page is where you will see. On page fifteen or fifteen of twenty four, the next page is where you will see some changes to funding in the Police Department. Specifically on sixteen of twenty four. Just over halfway down the page, you're going to see an amount of twenty five thousand dollars and just below that amount of forty three thousand dollars. The twenty five thousand dollars will be for a first year installment for a new body camera system. The next line item is forty three thousand dollars for the first year installment, first of five on these for a new camera system for our patrol vehicles. You may recall that in two thousand sixteen seventeen, when we started looking at all of our equipment for for the Police Department. The Police Department at the time had a set of body cameras that we found in a box downstairs, literally. The problem with that was at the time they made this effort to purchase body cameras, what they didn't do was purchase a maintenance system to go with it. Body cameras are the simple part. The storage of data is not the simple part. How all of those body cameras read, function, record, secure and store their data along with vehicle cameras is where your your difficulty comes in. We have worked through some of this to kind of piece this together. But last year, we were we were we we were able to secure the biggest operational piece that we needed for this. If you walk out of the door to the left as you exit the building, you're going to see a stack of computer boxes. Those computer boxes are all new laptops and hardware for every patrol vehicle we have, every fire truck that we have and every supervisor vehicle that we have. We now have the computers in place through some grant money that came to us. We've purchased all the computers. We have them functioning. But now we have to upgrade every bit of our other electronic tool that we use to do that. That's what that's what this is for. It is unfortunately the standard cost of doing Police Business one oh one in twenty twenty two, actually in two thousand two. It's just taken us twenty years to get to where we are, and that's okay. That's the purpose of of what we do. But if we're going to be in the police service business, those those tools are standards now. They're probably more standard than a firearm or a taser. It's just the cost of doing business and it is what it is, but we're prepared for that in this budget. So. That's the biggest change in the Police Department budget.
And that that's for a brand new system in this car and on the officer?
That is correct.
Okay.
And then you'll see when we get to the admin, we are also, as a part of this, we've found a way to put some of this bid project together. We, as a part of that, we are also going to replace the camera system within City Hall. The camera system certainly outdated, the camera system downstairs is outdated. So all of this will work in in concert. So all of this vendor will include all of our security with within City Hall, within the Police Department downstairs. All of our video within the Police Department and all of our operational computer equipment within our fire department. It's a substantial improvement for us that we're we have no no option but to complete.
The line item for auxiliary officers, is that county?
No, ma'am, that is City of Fairview Auxiliary Officer. We don't fund county in any way.
Okay, just want to be clear on that.
So that's sixteen of twenty four. Seventeen of twenty four is the Fire Department. There are no operational changes. Within the Fire Department, pretty standard on Fire Department is is where we are. We do have a couple of capital items we'll get into when we get to capital, but operationally, the Fire Department is substantially the same from from where they are. And let me let me preface this also by saying, as a part of the creation of this budget, all of our department heads meet together. I know Commissioner Dawson sat in on part of this. All of our department heads meet together. We take a few hours and every department head goes over every line item of everyone else's budget. So by the time it gets to you, there have been enough operational deals cutting that we're comfortable staff wise with everything that we're presenting to you for operationally. We we've kind of vetted this. Public Works gets to look at the Fire Department, Fire Department gets to look at Police, Planning looks at Police. So we we attempt to do a really good job of making sure no one misses anything they misses anything they need operationally. But when we present a budget to you, it kind of makes sense for our operations. So. Eighteen of twenty four is operational for the Fire Department. Again, no substantial changes to the Fire Department. Pretty basic from what we had in our amended budget. Page nineteen of twenty four is a recap of utilities for for the Fire Department. We'll, we have also utilities for Public Works, parts, that sort of thing. The reason we break those utilities out is because we know at some point we're going to have to build a fire station number two. And we like to get as much of an actual operating cost as we can. So for every building that's not included at City Hall, we break those those costs out. So when we do decide at some point in the future, we're going to have to build a fire station number two. Little things overlooked like utilities can really hurt your budget when you're trying to figure out what your operational cost is. It's not just personnel, it's not just fire hose, it's also water bills, utilities, power, light bills, all those sorts of things. So we try to capture every cost we can for every facility that we have. Public Works, no, no substantial changes to Public Works with the exception of, I believe I reported to you at the last meeting and I will when we get to the to the council meeting. We have added our second equipment operator. That position is fully funded here and we're super excited to have them here. So having that second equipment operator, even though it's one person added to a crew of four, will double. That one position will increase our ability to function by fifty percent. That's that's a huge addition for us. We're really excited to have have them on board. Operationally for Public Works, no changes on page twenty one of twenty four. These are standards. We have included to the right the resurfacing and operational costs out of State Street Aid, but Public Works are standard. And you'll see where we've also budgeted for utilities for the Public Works building. We have twenty twenty minutes. We'll use every minute of it. We're going to kind of get into the meat of some decisions that will be made, need to be made by the board, and I'll explain to what some of these are. To highlight some of the thing, we we listened at the Park Operational Plan discussion that we had on April seventh for some things to be considered going forward. So I'm going to highlight a couple of numbers and then once we get to the end, we need to kind of circle back to park question. But operationally, just run through these couple of pages really quickly. And there'll be questions and I'll kind of get to all those when we get into that. On personnel, on parks, that does include the programmer position that was talked about. There was a request that the the park programmer be included in the budget going forward. So this budget does fully fund that position. So that's that's item number number one, again, with the top of twenty four of twenty two. So when you see salaries and expenses, that does include the park programmer position or whatever we whatever it's determined to be, but that position is funded. Second to that is, it really didn't make a whole lot of sense for us to have that position if they didn't have any budget to work with and nothing to do. How we get them here and get them operating, at least seating, that is kind of important. So when you get down to operating expenses, the fourth line down, you'll see ten thousand dollars for community programs. That ten thousand dollars was added so we can put some money towards some community programs and see what this position is going to be able to do. So it's important that we have something to start with, particularly when there's an unknown. And then just below that, twenty five hundred dollars for computer equipment is specific to that. We don't know what programs will be, computer, other things. So we're trying to give them not only some programming seed money to start, but operationally, how do they function? Where do they work? What do they use? So we've added twenty five hundred dollars to to that. Other than that, on twenty, page twenty two, no substantial changes. On page twenty three, the next page, second line down, we included twenty five hundred dollars in office furniture. Some of the equipment and furniture that we have at the park is really not suitable for a fully operational position if we're going to get someone in to kind of identify them to work. So we have included twenty five hundred dollars for some office improvements, not knowing again what we'll need. They are going to need some improved facilities out at the park. So we're trying to fund as much as we can with the basics operationally and and seed that. And then the only other change to the right of this, which we'll get into in just a couple of minutes. But you'll notice in the middle of the page, in the center, under Bowie Park Fund, thirty thousand dollars. That thirty thousand dollars funds the park master plan. We talked about doing that for some time. What does that look like? I know there's been some reach out to a couple of vendors who could do that work, but that thirty thousand dollars is specific to that. We anticipate that we will get that work done hopefully in the fall of this year, certainly in calendar year twenty twenty two. That's what that thirty thousand dollars is for, to kind of see where we go with the parts, short term and long term. Page twenty four of twenty four is reserves. I'll get to that when we get to the budget report here in just a few minutes under the under the meeting. But no, no, nothing certainly coming out of out of those.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Certainly.
As a part of the P O P C committee, have y'all come up with a number that, like, maintenance, things that need to be done, stuff like that? Because I'm seeing a thousand dollar, unless I'm just wrong on the numbers. How how's that working?
I'll I'll show you in just a second.
Okay, I'm just.
We do maintenance each year, but I'll show you what, and this is outside the P O P C. The maintenance is maintenance, that's not.
It's just, I know that Rod and his group have gone through the buildings and kind of put together a list, and I know that things have been submitted to the city, so.
We had substantially the same list. How we arrive at those things is until we get capital money to come in to make sure we're not overspending. But as a part of that, I approved ten thousand dollars in repairs today. So we we.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I said, as a part of those ongoing things we do annually, I approved ten thousand dollars in repairs today. So those are standard operating. I we appreciate their time doing that, but those are things that we kind of budget and click along as we go to do. We have some bigger issues of parts. I want to get into that, but not to discount your question, yes, we have some some funding for that. I'll show you future in just a second, how that will work.
Okay, I I've just read the list and it seems like some things are kind of needing to be addressed right now.
We, I assure you, they're being addressed, fully and completely. So so with that, we have two pages that are going to be the two most important pages you see tonight. One, one page will be specifically important, central to this discussion. So on page one, and these are not numbered, these are the last two pages that you have. But the pages that are not numbered, on the top of the first page, you'll see I T infrastructure, ninety two thousand dollars. That ninety two thousand dollars is City Hall infrastructure that will go to the City Hall portion of the the camera system, the security system for for the the city that will function with the with the police equipment that we just talked about. And it will include a replacement of the electronic door system that we have here. You take your card, you go up to the door, you open it. That's proprietary service that was installed when this building was built. There's a failure of those throughout the building. The exterior doors work, sometimes the interior doors do not. That company has gone out of business and there is no replacement for for the system that we have now. Again, it's it's seventeen years old. So that ninety two thousand pays for the camera system and integration into the electronic system for the police security. And then a replacement for the electronic door and security that we have at City Hall. We have no choice but to replace that in some way because it substantially does not not work. So so we have there, to the right of of the of that, you'll see three hundred fifty thousand dollars. And that's for property acquisitions, specifically on property out on ninety six at Northwest Highway to start that road project out there. Then coming down the page in the middle, you'll see some rather large sums of money. In the middle of the page, in the stormwater, six hundred thousand dollars. That, we anticipate spending that six hundred thousand dollars in the coming year budget as we get into remediation of stormwater throughout the city. All those will have to be bid. There's a process to go through, but that's part of what the equipment will help us identify as we complete stormwater work. Nothing's been identified on that yet, but we will have those identified and spend that money. To the right hand side of the page, you'll see five hundred thousand dollars for firing range approved in the budget. We anticipate most of those dollars will be spent in the coming year budget. And then to the left of the page, at the bottom, under operating fund, you'll see a hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. Part of that is where we transition to capital. But as we know, the Police Department fleet in two thousand fourteen, they purchased a a a ton of vehicles, those have just exhausted their useful life. Through Liso funding and through operating fund, our plan going forward that we installed last year is to replace three patrol vehicles a year. Now, we just simply cannot keep with the fleet that we have, the aged fleet, the maintenance and operation. So we will simply go through the replacement of that. That will not be an addition of vehicles. That will be replacing vehicles that exhaust exhausted their useful life, whatever legacy equipment there is. Legacy equipment is what you can transfer from an old vehicle to a new. If you're a light bar on your old vehicle, works on a new vehicle, we will legacy legacy that over to the new radio, what have you. But we will, for every vehicle that we replace, we will dispose of one as well. Simply because we have patrol cars approaching two hundred thousand miles and they're eight years old. Those are going to have to come out of service. So that's just a stand annual standard annual cost of doing business, police.
Mr. Collins, how close are we to to getting that cycle in into effect?
We've already started. We started last year. We have three new patrol vehicles on on the on the ground now. We have three patrol vehicles that are on order that have not hit the ground yet. And as soon as this budget's passed, we'll we'll pass or we'll purchase three more. The turnaround time for a patrol vehicle from the time the order until its time is driven is approximately one year. So it just it just takes time in today's climate, certainly. So once we start doing this, we won't actually see these vehicles in service until the earliest, maybe February. So as soon as this budget gets passed, we'll place the order, order all the equipment, and we'll get right into trying to get those in service. So.
And just the the percentage of those vehicles, you know, once we get this this next order in, what percentage from the two thousand fourteen purchase will have been?
Fifty percent. I mean, every, it's every Ford Explorer you see in the parking lot is the two thousand fourteen legacy group. So to give you an idea of how urgent the need is to replace those and how difficult it's been in the past to make those purchases. Though every Ford Explorer you see is a Ford Explorer, with the exception of one. There was a two thousand sixteen that was an accident replacement. But the others are anything that doesn't, the new logo, the new Fairview logo, the blue and gray, those are the ones that replaced. Anything that doesn't have the logo, that logo, it just says police on the side, that's a two thousand fourteen legacy patrol that is still in service today.
Thank you.
The the need is great, for sure.
The firing range, five hundred thousand, that's an indoor outdoor, where is it located? Outdoor?
Correct, yeah.
And it's located where at the?
On the out parcel.
Out parcel, near Bowie?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, and that's the one where the Tennessee National Guard is going to do a good bit of our footprint work for us. We're negotiating some agreements with them, so that that's a certain cost savings for us. So your important page, the probably the most important thing, you guys will will have the last page of this. To talk about some funding and some questions, I'll I'll talk over to the right hand first. We're going to work our way from right to left. On the right hand side, you'll see a hundred thousand dollars in a grants program. That's actually bond issue. That hundred thousand dollars is to replace the wooden training tower at the Fire Department. That will go away and there'll be a metal structure built in its place. That thing needs to be removed. The only reason it stays is because we get credit on our I S O rating, the fact that it's there. But it's not suitable for use above floor number two. That thing's going to have to come out. That'll be a replacement. We did some work on that last year. The replacement was about seventy seven thousand dollars. We figure a hundred thousand is where we'll actually be. To the, again, to the right in that column, you see two point five million dollars in capital projects. That two point five million dollars is right now slated to go toward the biggest capital project we have, which is the the rebuild and reconstruction of Chester Road. As soon as we get into this, we'll start that bid project, get the engineering done and start getting that project work done. So that will be all of that project most likely, but that will be what we do to kick that kick that off. Working back to your left, sixty thousand dollars coming out of the State Street Aid. That is for an asphalt equipment that's a hot hot mix asphalt equipment. Right now, everything we patch is literally coal coal mix that we get from Lowe's and coal mix bags. You put it in the pothole, it's great till it rains the next time or a heavy truck runs over and it's gone. The hot mix is what the state uses and what. The hot mix is what the state uses, what the county uses, and it has an actual service life. You go in, you heat the area, it's not infrared, but it's close, you heat the area where the, where the repair is, you put the hot mix in, the hot mix is patched, it's more permanent repair. Hot mix is what you see when the state's doing their work on I-40. It has a little better use to it than just literally putting a coal, coal mix in, in a hole until it rains next time. To the left, you'll see Bowie Park Fund, there are two things, Park Playground Project, $52,163, that is money that will go over and above the playground itself. So when we're talking about the signage for, for the playground, those, those types of things, that's where those dollars will come from and that's how they're funded. That'll be discussed at the BLC meeting tonight. $20,000 miscellaneous repairs, that's in addition to the repairs that we already have underway. So when we get those things, we fund each year some repairs for that and that's what that $20,000 goes to. So as we go through the year, we see some other miscellaneous thing, a repair that needs to be on a roof on a pavilion, some other things that need to be, are taken care of, that's where that, that's what that $20,000 is for. So we fund those repairs in, in the budget. Moving to the left, the, the discussion, or the item that's going to really need to be discussed by the board, if you look at the facilities fund, the bottom page of that, or the bottom line of that, you'll see park infrastructure, $100,000. On April seventh, when we had the park operational plan committee discussion, there were several things that came about that were discussed as a part of new infrastructure. The two that really were discussed more broadly were parking at Triangle School, how we accomplished that, that thing, and the second was an improved walking trail around Veterans Lake. Now that would take some work to be done to the spillway, but how do we make some improvements out there as well? So at the time, we discussed how would we, what could we come up with for a number to make those improvements? I, I've squeezed and pushed and pulled on this budget every way I can to come up with some way to future fund that. And the $100,000 is what I was able to present to the board for investments in those things, given how we've not made any event, we just haven't had the money over the years to do those things. So as we get into that, we now have that $100,000. So with that, it's 100,000. That's, that's not 110, it's not, we're, we're stuck with, with, that's the most I can get out of this budget to apply to that. And consider that we're also putting nearly $25,000 more into just the operations for programming, in addition to hiring someone. So that $100,000 will be what we have to put into capital this year. So with that, the parks discussion that had been talked about, again, there's been talk about trying to, trying to improve parking, trying to do something at Veterans Lake and there was a proposal tonight for lighting outside of the, outside of the city at the park out there. That's where, that's what that $100,000 would be divided by, so...
It's not a lot of money.
It's not a lot of money.
So how do we determine what, who, who determines what's most important?
Five of you.
Okay, and when, when does that happen?
For...
Are we going to, are we going to do that as a part of the budget?
For budgeting purposes, the $100,000 will be included, right? So you won't, the, once, once we do, once we leave here tonight, that 100,000 doesn't go away, okay? So that 100,000 is, is the board. Now, if there are projects on city property, then it is what it is, we would just simply bid that work out and do that. If there was a, if there was a discussion of taking that money and applying it to a county park, that you're going to, that would require a BLC resolution. So let's say this board decided, we want to put 100,000, we're going to take this 100,000, and I'm not suggesting you do or don't, simple math. If the board says, we're going to take this 100,000 and put toward that project, then you would simply have to pass a resolution stating that's where that 100,000 goes and it would be internal projects, we would just discuss those openly, put the bid out and that would be, that'd be ours to do. So that 100,000 is board discussion for how you want to divide that, and you're right, it's not a lot of money.
And I, I wasn't talking about the baseball field. This, $100,000 is barely going to be enough to keep up the parks, the city parks.
Agreed.
So I, so what you're saying is we need to kind of come up, before the budget meeting, I guess, on the 18th or whatever, come up with like a, a list?
You won't have to come, the only thing that you would have to come up with before then is how much of any of this you want to put toward the county. That's really your primary question. For city parks and city projects, that's a part of our budget that we already have and if that 100,000 remain to, as, to go to city projects, then what the staff will simply do is we'll know that's our budget, we'll bid those projects out. Let's take parking at Triangle School for an example. We would bid Triangle School parking out, the number comes back, it is what it is. If that's $85,000, then we would approve that, then that $85,000 would come from this 100. So the board itself won't have to take any action on this 100,000 at all unless the board decides to put any of these dollars toward the baseball park. That's the only question that the board would have to answer as a part of taking a specific action.
So the city would determine what's, what is most need right now, it, with that 100,000?
Yeah, yeah, based on the, the discussion we have from the park operational plan discussion, there were two. The parking at Triangle School and walking facilities around the lake. So that's our direction right now. Our direction is we will, we will get as much of that work as we can get done with this 100,000. That's our, we'll spend every dollar of this on those two projects if we can, unless the board came back and said, we want to take X number of these dollars and put them to baseball. Then we would just simply take whatever you said goes to baseball, you vote on that by resolution and then we'll just take this 100,000 less that amount and that will be our, our money to work with on those projects.
So if we decided something for baseball, there's no money anywhere except this 100,000?
That's it, that's, we are, we are, we are to our limit.
And the, as far as like the, at the Triangle School, the air handling unit, the filters and stuff, they need to be...
There's a lot, if you'll look in parks, there's a line out of maintenance and it's maintenance for Triangle School and all of those are budgeted maintenance.
Okay, and that's something they check regularly because they really need to be?
We check them every month.
Okay.
Okay, we have a minute and a half, so we're going to take a, oh, I'm sorry, we have two minutes.
Mayor, I need to, I need to add one, one other quick thing on, on this, on the, on the last item that you see, you'll see to the left under operating, $87,000 for heavy equipment for public works. That project was budgeted this year, that'll be a carryover item. That, that piece of equipment will be used for drainage ditch work. Right now, we don't have a piece of equipment, we get a call, we're trying to clear out drains, storm drains, some other thing. We don't have the ability to do that, the only thing we have is a backhoe and backhoes are designed to dig one straight line or pick up debris in one straight line. The piece of equipment that we have is a mini axel, will give us ability to transition onto those and actually do storm, storm drain maintenance as a part of our stormwater plan. So with that, I apologize, this, what you see is, will be condensed to an ordinance form, it won't be nearly this long and lengthy, the ordinance is really designed to be condensed, it's required to be by the state. The only discussion that the board will have to have outside of this is if the board decides to fund money toward the park, then we just have to identify what that is, whatever you guys decide to do, and then draft a resolution so you can properly do that. Outside of that, we're, that's a big budget.
You're done?
And thank you for your time.
Okay, we will start the BLC meeting at 10 minutes after seven.